Good morning, Carroll County. Welcome to the Thursday, August 21st, open session for Carroll County Commissioners. And as we always like to do, we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance and moment of silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and divisible with liberty and justice for all.
So there's no precedent for this, but I guess you start.
I guess I start. Well, good morning, everybody. I'll be quick, just a couple of things today. So first is a reminder from the Commission on Aging and Disabilities and our Department of Citizen Services. In just a few short weeks, the 18th Annual Aging Your Way Expo, which will occur on Wednesday, September 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., will occur at the Shipley Arena at the Agricultural Center in Westminster. It is an event geared toward older adults, people with disabilities, veterans, their families, and caregivers. A particular note, there's going to be pickleball, various demonstrations, dozens of exhibitors, health screening, seminars on the latest fraud and scams that are impacting seniors, prescription medication disposal, vendor prize bingo, boxed lunches, a senior-oriented bookmobile, Veterans Alley, a preview wall for the Traveling Vietnam Memorial Wall exhibit that's coming to New Windsor in October. And it, oh, thanks, Chris, it promises to be a very good time. I know we go every year and it's always an enjoyable thing, and I certainly hope to see you there. Second, as you're probably aware, Public Service Enterprise Group, or PSEG, is in the midst of conducting property surveys and filing lawsuits against property owners. PSEG has recently filed to receive protection from federal marshals in conducting their surveys due to threats and harassment they say that they have received. And while I don't think federal law enforcement is appropriate for something like this, and that there certainly are other options, I do want to urge peace and respect towards the surveyors who are just doing their jobs. Yes, PSEG has been disingenuous and disrespectful as a company. They've been condescending, they've been callous, but we are not them. Please be peaceful, please be respectful, we don't want anybody to get hurt, and we need to keep focused on the various legal paths and opportunities ahead of us. We are in the right, PSEG is far and away in the wrong, and they can stay there. And last but not least, this morning, I want to offer my sincere compliments and gratitude to the New Windsor Volunteer Fire Company, to DFEMs, and to all of the fire and emergency services who responded to the fire that occurred in New Windsor. There were no injuries, and there was a potential danger of fuel catching on fire, but through the absolute excellence of the individuals who responded, a far worse disaster that could have happened was avoided. So I want to compliment everybody and thank them for all of the work that they did in handling that fire. And that's all for me this morning. Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Carroll County. Commissioner Vagliotti, I couldn't agree more with your comments, especially the last portion talking about our fire and EMS in the county. I think, as we've all said many times up here, we're very fortunate to have many fine folks we have looking out for the people of Carroll County. That was just another example that could have gone in a lot of ways, but luckily it did not. Just going to be really brief this morning, got a couple of things I want to mention. Talking about a number of various events this week pertaining to nonprofits. Yesterday, I attended the Carroll County Youth Service Bureau Crab Cakes for a Cause event, which was held at Rock Salt. Obviously, as we all know, mental health is a huge issue, not only in our community but throughout, and it was a great event. They had, the Ryan Ripken Show was there filming. It was just a good event overall, and obviously, we all support Carroll County Youth Service Bureau and all the hard work and dedication they give to the community regarding mental health, and just wanted to give a shout out to them. Secondly, wanted to mention really quick, on Tuesday, I stopped in at Collision Course, which is on Main Street in Westminster, and dropped off about 10 book bags for kids this year. Obviously, on Saturday, there'll be an event, the Back to School Drive with Find Your Purpose will be at Westminster City Park from 6, or excuse me, 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. They're still accepting items through Friday if anybody would like to drop off items for this event. Could be anything from, you know, school items such as highlighters, binders, pencils, notepads, glue sticks, the typical school supplies. This is definitely a great event on Saturday. If you have not, if you don't get the opportunity to drop off items, definitely come out and support the community, 3:00 to 6:00 on Saturday. Last year, this event gave out over 100 backpacks to kids. So great opportunity and wonderful that the community can come together, and I know this is just one of a variety of events for back to school, but definitely something that as a community, we do very well, which is not only support the community as a whole, but support the youth in our community. And last but certainly not least, I wanted to mention that today at this afternoon, there will be an event kicking off at 4:00 p.m. in Westminster, which will be the Kindness Stroll. As many of us probably have seen throughout the county and definitely Westminster, the Be Kind signs that are located throughout. This is an event that'll run from, let me find it here, I'm sorry, I'm losing my notes. It's coming up and it'll run for about four weeks. It's an event where people can go and actually view various signs, they can vote for them, support them. It's a good fundraising opportunity for the community, but, you know, we live in interesting times, and I know some days we all don't agree on a wide array of topics, but I think the one thing we could all hopefully do is be kind to each other. Not trying to use that as a plug this morning, but the reality is, none of us know what anybody else is going through. Could be family issues, could be job, could be financial, but the reality is, you know, a little bit of kindness does go a long way. So just want to thank everybody that's involved with this, and if you can make it out today, stop out for the opening, and if not, you've got a couple of weeks to vote. So that's all for me.
Very well said, Commissioner Gordon. Very well said.
Thank you. I'll start out by mentioning, we have three commissioners today. It's been a long time since Carroll County had three by design. Commissioner Garren's traveling and could not be here, and of course, Commissioner Rostine, now Secretary Rostine deserted us. So we're down to three today. So hopefully, we can get along because a quorum's three, and we need three votes to pass anything. So be an interesting, good meeting. Commissioner Gordon and I went to Mako last week. Great time. Mako's been very supportive, very much pushes for local control. There's meeting sessions, some more meaningful than others, but there's good meeting sessions, there's vendors' displays, almost all the counties had displays. We got to meet three or four secretaries and meet individuals. Lieutenant Governor was very present at it. The governor wasn't quite as much as she was, but he was there. I don't think he walked through the vendors' displays.
He actually was at one point, yes, he was at one point, yes.
A couple vendors told me they didn't see him, but it could have been the pathway he took. But it's an opportunity to see a lot of them. I got to talk to the comptroller a little bit before session that she did, so it's great networking, and hopefully, we learned a bunch and we'll bring it back to Carroll County. We did the State's Attorney's groundbreaking, and that's been a long time coming. I think people may not understand, where they are is pretty cramped for the number of people they have. I think, I think in the past, in that same facility, they might have had 25 people. I think they're up to 45 or 50 now. And more importantly, the court system pretty much told them they got to move out. So they, we need this building. And yeah, it was a great, great groundbreaking. And we had a cabinet meeting this week. Staff's prepping for our bond rating trip to the three bond rating groups, and I just, we have great staff, and we've seen on a national level and a state level, it's not automatic that you're triple A with all three. And we've been that for a while, and they seem to be maintaining it. I did my breakfast at North Carroll Library, and the library hosts all five of us at libraries in our own district. And the chamber not only hosts us, but charges people to be there and listen to us. So it's a good event, and it was a nice, diverse crowd there. It was great seeing everybody. And there were a few questions, but not many, and it's just a good event. And have we, have we done all five this year? We're done, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, but if you're interested in attending any of those, see the chamber.
Commissioner Howard, you want to do a second one?
No, I asked them if, since I have two libraries in my district, do I have to do two? They said not, so I guess I'm okay. Last night, I was at Carroll County Community College trustees meeting. They have a new trustee, Benjamin Shepper, and Heather Dewis did a swearing-in ceremony at the meeting, and he's official now and there. And I welcome him and hope him success in that group. I think he's been very active in the community and the community college prior to this, so it sounds like they made a good choice. Anything else, Parity Carroll?
That's all for us.
Okay, our first item is Motorola Command Central Vault Cloud-Based Storage. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, everybody.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Department of Technology Services requests your approval to renew the contract for Command Central Vault Cloud-Based Storage for the State's Attorney's Office with Motorola Solutions in the amount of $44,160. This amount is approved in the FY '26 budget.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Motorola Command Central Vault is a cloud-hosted digital evidence management and storage platform that is used by the State's Attorney's Office, and Kelly Cox is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Motion to renew the contract for Command Central Vault Cloud-Based Storage for the State's Attorney's Office with Motorola Solutions in the amount of $44,160.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Also, Department of Technology Services Judicial Dialogue Software Maintenance and Support.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Department of Technology Services requests your approval to renew the contract for Judicial Dialogue Software Maintenance and Support with Judicial Dialogue Systems in the amount of $31,558.80. This amount is approved in the FY '26 budget.
Judicial Dialogue is the platform used by the District Circuit and Juvenile Court Divisions of the State's Attorney's Office to manage their cases, and it allows interoperable data exchange with Maryland electronic court system.
Motion to renew the contract for Judicial Dialogue Software Maintenance and Support with Judicial Dialogue Systems in the amount of $31,558.80.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Now we'll move to Summer Youth Connection Grant Award with Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act.
Moving faster than people are expecting. Are they there?
I was in another meet, I left a Tyler meeting to run down here, so I have.
Oh, they're there.
Yep. And while we're waiting for her to come up, something I want to mention, I wanted to mention, Parity Carroll, and I forgot it. It seems like a lot of misunderstanding over our agenda items. And number one, hopefully, we planned that this agenda would be relatively simple because we're missing an active commissioner, and we're waiting on the governor to decide who our next commissioner is. But any one of us can add an agenda item, and you're going to see later at this meeting, we try to do it with a consensus, even though one could do it, and I think later in this meeting, we're going to add a future agenda item, so we're very, and at the end of the meeting, we review the next two weeks. So we're, I think, we're very hands-on with our agenda, but, hi.
Good morning.
I did a commercial while we're waiting for you.
You took a commercial break.
You're welcome.
I haven't caught my breath yet. I just did a run.
It's okay, just take a minute, you're fine.
I gave her a call, I was like, let's go.
Good morning, Denise Beaver, Director of Economic Development. We're here today seeking approval for the Program Year '25 Summer Youth Connection Grant Award and the Program Year '25 and FY '26 Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Formula Grant allocations. So our Carroll County Workforce Development Board approved these preliminary acceptance of these grants on June 17th. So we're here today to tell you a little bit about them, if you'd like to know what's going on. We've had another very successful summer youth program and ongoing workforce development activities. So Heather Powell, our manager of our Workforce Development Center, is here if you have any questions.
I actually just have a really brief question, as she's catching her breath.
Take your time.
We can slow this all down this morning, it was good.
Long, brief question.
I will. How many youths do we serve typically in this program? I'm just curious.
For the summer youth program?
Yes, yes.
So we've leveraged several grants. I'll start with the one that comes from the governor's office. It's a very small grant, and with the raise of the minimum wage to minimum $15 an hour, we're down to eight students that we serve. Okay, catch my breath again. We also work with Doors. We do paths-through services for students that they place in other jobs, where the employer of record. This year, we took 10 students of our own, so we acclimated them into our program. We also had several that we used our ARPA money for. Can't breathe. So total number.
You were doing quite all right, I promise you're doing good.
Total number, we started out with 44 students in our program. 11 passed through, 34 completed, and an additional 11.
Next time, I'll make sure we tell you I'll bring your track shoes in the line. I feel bad for you.
I just tried to leverage it, but I was in another meeting this morning, sorry.
Oh, no.
And you guys were zippy this morning.
That's right. And I do think, I mean, there's opportunity to serve more. Obviously, there's more youth in the community that need these kind of intensive services, and the Carroll County Workforce Development Center is very well positioned to provide these services because we do it year-round and, you know, work with all of these various partners. So with more funding, we could help more youth.
We could, and I need to note that these are young people who have barriers to employment, low income, disability, and sometimes multiple disabilities. Justice involves youth, homelessness. So we're talking about a significant disadvantage entering the workforce. That's why this program's so important. It's usually their first look. Businesses act as a mentor to these young people. It's, we've been running over 20 years. It's a good program.
That's incredible. One other, just really quick question you made me just think of. In relationship to the youth we serve with this, how do we reach out and how do we connect with them? Is there, I mean, I assume, obviously, you all are promoting it, advertising and such, but I was just kind of curious a little more on that, if you could.
Absolutely. So our connections with the school system, the work that we're doing under Pillar Three in Blueprint, has really helped, but we work with our partners, Doors, who are in the school systems as well, our partners at DJS, the Circle of Caring, we promote that, so it's widespread through the community.
That's fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon, you want to?
Sure. I move the Board of Commissioners accept the PY, what is it, PY '25 Governor's Summer Youth Program Grant Award and the fiscal year '25, is that fiscal year?
PY.
PY '25, FY '26 Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Formula Grant Awards.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Going to work on my physical fitness.
Walk slowly on the way back.
That's right.
Now, we're going to look at the 2025 Spring Amendment to the Carroll County Water and Sewer Service Master Plan and possibly approve it.
Good morning to you both.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're here for your action on the Spring 2025 Amendments to the Water and Sewer Master Plan. Plan. As you recall, we were here a couple of weeks ago for the public hearing. You left the record open for 10 days and it has now closed. We did not receive any additional public comments on the amendments, so we are here for your decision.
Motion to adopt the 2025 Spring Amendment to the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan and forward to MDE for final approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Now, briefing discussion and possible decision on the comment letter for the Town of Hampstead annexation.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning. All right, we are before you today requesting the board send a comment letter to the Town of Hampstead regarding annexation number six, the Noreen property. Javier Toro is here with us to present this annexation to you this morning.
Well, saying good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. Today, I'm presenting an annexation that was received on July 9th by the Town of Hampstead. This is a property that's .21 acres located at 1730 North Main Street in Hampstead. It is parcel 292 on tax map number 33. It is located on the 2nd Commissioner District. The property, it is located on, it's contiguous to the growth area of the Town of Hampstead and it's within its growth limits. As you can see in the map, it has access to the North Main Street area in Hampstead. The property is a residence and is considered under legal non-conforming status. The county zoning administrator confirmed this through a letter sent to the property owner. And in this case, the property is looking to be connected to the Town of Hampstead Water Services. Currently, the zoning for the property, it is in the I-1 light industrial category. The Town of Hampstead has committed that it will be placed under the restricted industrial for a total of 9,424 feet. The property does not require a zoning waiver. It has a restricted industrial designated land use. As for the Town of Hampstead 2010 Comprehensive Plan amended in the 2023. Amended in 2023. Currently, the water has, the property has access to existing water lines and for the county, it is under the W-1 category, which is existing. In sewer, it is under the S-3 category, which is a priority. Our agency comments is that we recommend the Town of Hampstead give public notice by posting the property prior to the date of the public hearing and notifying all adjoining property owners. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, planning staff finds a zoning waiver is not required. Asked permitted uses in the town's restricted industrial district are not substantially different from the permitted uses in the county's light industrial district. It is consistent with a 2023 amendment to the 2010 Hampstead Comprehensive Plan as the annexation area is located within the town's municipal growth area. And number three, the proposed annexation will not overburden county facilities. Planning and Zoning Commission concurs with the staff findings and conveys their support for the annexation to the Board of County Commissioners. The Town of Hampstead will be hosting, will be having a public hearing on September 9th, 2025. For today's action is a briefing, discussion, and a possible decision for the comment letter to be sent to the Town of Hampstead. Any questions?
Do I take this one, Commissioner?
Sure. I move the Board to adopt. Oh, I went, I flipped back too far. I move the Board approve, sign, and forward the comment letter to the Town of Hampstead regarding annexation number 46.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good day.
You, too.
Now, we're going to talk about Bulk Roads Salt. Thank you, Hampstead.
Well, I can make it. Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Roads Operations requests your approval to use DeIcing Depot to purchase Bulk Roads Salt for Carroll County at a cost of $1,520,000 for the 25-26 season. DeIcing Depot has issued a term contract from bid number 19F22122 that the Office of Procurement solicited bids. This amount is within the approved budget.
So Commissioners, I'm sure you're aware, but for our viewing audience, the Bureau of Roads Operations is responsible for approximately 1,000 miles of roadway countywide. Our annual salt usage does fluctuate based on snowfall and ice conditions. And then we also supply salt to Manchester, Union Bridge, Tontytown, Sykesville, and New Windsor, as well as the Board of Education, all of those reverse the county for the salt. And then Facilities, the Farm Museum, and Northern Landfill and Hoshawell use our supplies also. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer.
What do you do? And I know you try to control delivery based on weather and need. What do you do with what's left over at the end of the year? Keep it for next year?
Absolutely. Yeah, and we go into the year, we try to buy when salt is at its cheapest and demand for delivery is at its lowest. And then two weeks ago, you all approved a conveyor, which allows us to be even more efficient and higher with our storage. So we appreciate that, and now we'll just get that salt in to do some.
Can I object to this item as to we're not going to have any SNOW this year?
Have you heard what the almanac is apparently claiming?
Motion to approve the purchase of Bulk Road Salt from DeIcing Depot in the amount of $1,520,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, snow removal services.
We're not going to have those either. I objected to the first one because we're not going to have any SNOW.
So we don't, on good advice, we don't even need to vote on this?
Right. I think we should just eliminate all of them.
I don't know that I want to have my name connected to that decision, but that's up to the rest of you.
Where's global warming when you need it?
Yeah. We can be optimistic.
Right.
The Office of Procurement in conjunction with the Bureau of Roads requests your signing authority approval to spend up to but not exceed $540,000 for snow removal for the 25-26 season to one or more of the vendors listed below with the acceptance and approval of a formal written response from a request for quote. This approval will grant the Bureau of Roads the authority to sign for purchases related to these services and remain in compliance with the 2022 Delegation of Authority Resolution 1162-2022. This amount was approved in the fiscal year 26 budget.
He sure did say a lot there, didn't he? But now, right down to the background, this is nine contractors with 26 contractual vehicles and we use them for snow removal during the 25-26 snow season. And we use everything from one-ton pickup trucks from these contractors to 15-ton triaxles when we need them.
Motion to approve snow removal services by multiple vendors in the amount not to exceed $540,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. So this is traditional snow removal when it's not too bad. What do you do for V-blades and loaders and graders when there's a severe storm? Is that a separate bid or an annual bid or how? And some of these guys may have that stuff, too, but some may not.
And we have some V-blades as well, but.
We do. When we have the big blizzards, we have called companies like CJ Mill or MT Laney that we already have current contracts, term contracts with. And so we use our heavy equipment budget to pay for those fees.
Okay. Plus, they dump all the extra snow in Roberta's yard, so.
Yeah, yes. Any further questions or comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, tree trimming.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Roads Operations requests your approval to use C2 Crane and Tree Service to perform ongoing tree trimming services for Carroll County at a cost of $756,000 for FY26. C2 Crane and Tree Service was issued a term contract in June of 2023, bid number 19F2223 that the Office of Procurement solicited bids. This amount is within the approved fiscal year 26 budget.
So this covers a lot of tree maintenance that we do all year long, including trimming, removal, stump grinding, brush disposal. And of course, they have traffic control with that. It also includes any line items that we might need for special equipment like crane and bucket trucks. And again, we do this all year long and lately, you know, storm-dependent, we seem to do it a lot more, so.
Motion to approve ongoing tree trimming service by C2 Crane and Tree Service in the amount not to exceed $756,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. So this is along roads or on county property. Utilities, BG, Verizon, Comcast, et cetera, any of them have overhead lines, they do their own trimming for that, right? We do not.
They do.
Correct.
And we, you know, our, we always look at, and we have a couple of, actually three, certified arborists on staff that look at the trees. So not only are we responsible for what's directly along the road, for commuter safety, we also look at anything that might fall onto the road because we always have to use caution in any of those. So it's a constant evaluation. And again, depending upon the weather, the wind, and everything else, Mother Nature always wins, we deal with that.
And we get a lot of emails and requests from the Board of Ed, from school bus drivers and stuff, you know, when they hit a little bit narrow roads, that we do a lot of trimming, you know, per their request to protect their vehicles as well.
Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Various blacktop products.
The Office of Procurement in conjunction with the Bureau of Roads requests your spending authority for various blacktop products throughout the county not to exceed $415,000 for FY26 to one or more of the vendors listed below with the acceptance and approval of a formal written response from a request for quote. This approval will grant the Bureau of Roads the authority to sign for purchases related to these services and remain in compliance with the 2022 Delegation of Authority Resolution number 1162-2022. This amount was approved in the fiscal year 26 budget.
Okay, so back to our roads. These funds support the purchase of asphalt materials that we need to maintain safe and reliable roads where we do repairs, patchwork, all across the county.
Motion to approve assigning authority to the Office of Procurement for the purchase of various blacktop products from multiple vendors in the amount not to exceed $415,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Does this include coal patch?
Yes.
Everything's in this one. Yep.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I'm sorry. I didn't.
Now, contract award for water storage tank inspection and evaluation services.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Utilities requests your approval to award a contract for the professional inspection and evaluation of the Bark Hill, Linton, and Martz water storage tanks in Commissioner Districts 1 and 5 to Johnson, Murmeren, and Thompson Incorporated of Hunt Valley, Maryland, in the amount of $30,243. This award will be made via competitively bid-term contract. The bid amount is within the adopted budget.
Gentlemen, we typically inspect our water storage tanks on a three-to-five-year cycle. The Bark Hill, Linton, and Martz water storage tanks are presently due for reinspection and evaluation. The Bark Hill tank holds 100,000 gallons and serves the Bark Hill community and Francis Scott Key High School. Linton tank has a capacity of a half a million gallons and is located adjacent to Century High School. It is part of Freedom Area's high elevation service zone. The Martz tank holds 1 million gallons and is in the southwest part of the Freedom Service Area's low elevation zone. JMT will evaluate the wet interior, the dry interior, the exterior, all accessories, and the foundation of each tank. The exterior surfaces will be inspected by rigging and repelling, while the wet interior service inspection will be performed with a sanitized, remote-operated vehicle, a submarine essentially. Paint samples will be taken from drive services and tested, and wall thicknesses will be measured via ultrasound device. All sanitary, safety, security, and structural issues observed for each tank will be summarized and rehabitation recommendations will be provided to us. And these findings will be used to develop future improvement projects for each water storage tank. Any questions for me?
Motion to award a contract for the professional inspection and evaluation of the Bark Hill, Linton, and Martz water storage tanks to Johnson, Murmeren, and Thompson Incorporated in the amount of $30,243.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. If something does happen with these, it can be devastating, and I don't want to jinx you, but these are relatively low-maintenance items and that's why the inspections are spread out and.
That is correct. We do not anticipate any major issues. Each tank is visited on almost a daily basis as well, so we're pretty much on top of these.
So in theory, we're inspecting them almost every day.
At least visually, yes.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, replacement of water valve bolts in the Freedom District Service Area.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Utilities requests your approval to award a contract for the replacement of water valve bolts at 22 locations within the Freedom District Service Area in Commissioner District 5 to Mid-Atlantic Utilities Incorporated of Bowling Springs, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $89,650. This award will be made via competitively bid-term contracts. Bids were solicited from four contractors and proposals were received from one of these contractors. Even though only one bid was received, the average unit cost of $4,075 compares favorably with the recent water valve bolt projects and represents a fair value to the county. The bid amount is within the adopted budget.
Gentlemen, these cast iron bolts are the bane of our existence. These water valves with cast iron bolts were installed throughout the county and region during the periods of heavy construction from the mid-'80s through the 1990s. And unbelievably, they included the cast iron bolt connections. This problem is not exclusive to Carroll County. As we have experienced all too often, cast iron valve bolts rust over time and snap and fail both unexpectedly, as well as when the water valve is being turned for maintenance or a system need. These bolt failures are a continuing challenge for my staff. Lack of confidence in the integrity of the cast iron bolts absolutely limits our routine maintenance activity. This project is an ongoing proactive approach to replace cast iron water valve bolts with stainless steel bolt assemblies. It is estimated that approximately 30% or 1,100 of the 4,300 water valves in the Freedom District were installed with cast iron bolts. With this 22 water valve project, the Bureau will have completed 481 of the estimated 1,100 cast iron bolt locations. And we do have a very good work history with this contractor and absolutely fully expect it to continue on with this project. Any questions regarding water bolts?
How come you made him say valve, water valve bolts, and you got cast iron bolts?
He just wanted to confuse me.
My dot's a little bit higher.
Well, we'll see if I mess this up. Motion to award a contract for the replacement of water valve bolts at 22 locations within the Freedom District Service Area to Mid-Atlantic Utilities Incorporated in the amount of $89,650.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Now, fleet purchases for Ford Explorers.
Good morning, Commissioners.
How you doing?
Roberta. Don't trip. I wasn't even running.
Answered.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management and Warehouse Operations requests your approval to purchase four 2025 Ford Explorers from Hertrick Fleet Services Incorporated in the amount of $183,380. This purchase will be made from State of Maryland contract and a Howard County contract that Carroll County will utilize. This amount is within the FY26 approved budget.
All four units are replacements and we have the opportunity to purchase at 2025 rates before the production cycle ends. Two are designated for the detention center will be properly outfitted to safely transport individuals while ensuring the safety of both our officers and the county residents. Also, one will be assigned to investigation and is also being ordered ahead of the remaining patrol fleet that we have coming in for this year to secure a 2025 model, offering a cost-effective advantage also. The existing units will be. The existing units will be decommissioned and sold at auction. They are expected to bring between $4,000 to $7,000.
Motion to approve the purchase of four 2025 Ford Explorers from Hertrick Fleet Services Incorporated in the amount of $183,380.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, two Superline trailers.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management and Warehouse Operations requests your approval to purchase one CAM Superline Full-Tilt Trailer and one CAM Superline Scissor Dump Trailer from Ripleyon Equipment Company in the amount of $25,530.50. The Bureau of Fleet Management Warehouse Operations receives two quotes listed below. The amount is within the FY26 approved budget.
Both trailers are replacements also. They're used for the community parks and essential in maintaining all parks across the county. The dump trailer is ideal for transporting loose materials such as debris, rock, mulch, dirt, other similar items. It will significantly improve the efficiency and cleanup of landscaping tasks. The tilt trailer is designed for transporting heavy equipment, including skid steers, backhoes, loaders, and their attachments. Its tilt functionality allows for easier loading and unloading, enhancing safety and productivity during the transport. They ensure continued improvement, maintenance, operations for all county parks. Current trailers unfortunately will offer little value in return at auction time, but they will be auctioned.
Motion to approve the purchase of two CAM Superline trailers from Ripleyon Equipment Company at a cost of $25,453.50.
Did you, did you say 453?
Did.
I thought it was 543.
Well, I'll do it again just to be safe. I withdraw that motion. I'll say it again just to make sure I didn't say something wrong. I probably did. Water valve bolt thing got to me.
Still traumatized over that one, huh?
Trauma. Motion to approve the purchase of two CAM Superline trailers from Ripleyon Equipment Company at a cost of $25,543.50.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or criticism or?
I just want to make sure we have the numbers right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm glad somebody caught that. We may have ended up with 20 of these Superline trailers and.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. Yes. Do we have any public comment on the phone?
I have no one on the line, sir.
And do we have any public comment here?
Yeah, I can fill it out afterwards to save you some time, if that's okay.
Yep, that's fine.
Any extra of your time. Might as well just pop some gum in real quick, just a little bit of a stress layer. Commissioners, as you know, my name is Andrew Manning. I just wanted to, well, and I'm ready to begin, I'm sorry. I don't want to take up any more of your time than necessary. So today, I'm here because appearing today here beside my new friend, alongside my new friend. So the first couple sentences make him out good. I'm surprised the last few sessions haven't been very long. Today, I will be reigniting my former public comment regarding the man who was here to speak about the child lots. Last session, I couldn't help but notice the lady, and no disrespect whatsoever to her, who explained what groups are and how they work for nearly an hour. I think we already have a clear understanding of what a group is and how a group operates. I raise this point to highlight the imbalance. Extended time is readily available, readily granted to government functionaries, yet when it comes to concern citizens addressing specific issues, that same consideration is not always shown. And that imbalance came into sharp focus with the disregard I saw demonstrated to this man who went through all the proper channels to appear before you that day. Mr. Kyler, you left early that day. You specifically said, "I see the writing on the wall with this one," and then you stepped out. Granted, you had somewhere to be, so I'll give you the benefit of the doubt. Mr. Vigliotti, you're always hitting with the hard-hitting questions, man. That was your perfect opportunity to ask this guy, you know, what incentivized you to buy this land with these lots that you knew you would ultimately have to pay extra money for? You know, what brings you before us today that this financial obligation is now a concern for you when it wasn't previously? These are the kind of questions that should have been asked instead of this floating narrative, "Well, you know, we already made one mistake for one of your lots, so, you know, we better look into that, blah, 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 blah. If we help you, you know, we're going to have to help the rest of the public. God forbid, you know, anybody else wants to come here and complain about it in the room." Sorry, I'm spitting because I'm rushing. I don't want to mess this up. Mr. Gordon, yeah, I mean, that was basically your narrative, man. Your narrative was, "Well, if we help you, we got to help somebody else," and, you know. But honestly, you two aren't my concern. My concern here was Mr. Guerin, and I did have a statement I want to make about Ed. I want to pop that in real quick. Ed is already set in his ways. I didn't expect anything from him, especially when I could already tell that guy just likes to listen to himself talk. But Mr. Guerin, after last session, not last week's, but the weeks before that, since last week's was canceled, crap, I'm going to lose my thought. Yeah, hoity-toity, Mr. Guerin. I'm going to go ahead and tell Mr. Guerin myself, nobody's buying this. You want to take and condense all your things into one thing and get to it at another time. Nobody's going for that. Your hoity-toity attitude is what happens to government officials when they get the position that they want. They locked it in, they're settled, nobody can really remove it from it. You know, that's when the hoity-toity in this comes in. And Mr. Guerin, man, you're an opportunist. And Mr. Gordon, I'm sorry, sir, you're an opportunist with that whole $100,000 MSRP thing. So you had a perfect opportunity, man. That was your scorecard right there to make a good impression on the public, man, instead of trying to be an opportunist. Thank you. I'm sorry, I knew that was real rough, but I did my best. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comments. I just want to caution you, we bend and let you discuss each one of us, but don't go to personal attacks with anybody.
I don't think I did.
I'm just saying, caution. I didn't stop you.
Oh, Mr. Kyler, man, you just, oh, man, you just broke the bond. I thought we had a good bond, man. Oh, man, it's a public comment, free speech, and I think I was really professional and respectful.
The bond must have been very weak.
It must have been in my head.
If I just broke it, it must have been very weak.
I must have been seeing things. I'm sorry. I'll keep that in mind. Thank you, sir.
Hey, thanks for the community comment.
All right.
Administrative session open.
Sure. So I have something today for discussion, possible decision next week on the agenda. I'd like to request putting our delegation of authority resolution onto the agenda. We've been talking about it for a couple of months, and I'm certainly willing to move ahead with discussion about it if everybody is so amenable to it.
I agree.
Yep, we're good with it.
Absolutely.
That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve closed minutes.
Motion to approve closed minutes for legal and personnel from 8/7/2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, corrections, or changes to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry.
I didn't get it something.
We're ready for agenda.
Morning, Wanda. Morning, Wanda. How are you today?
If I can talk quickly, this may be a record if we're done in less than an hour, you think?
Go.
Now, you're taking time.
Yeah, come on.
I know we've lost one guy, but, well, I've got one thing. If, Mr., Commissioner Guerin, if you're listening as you drive, evidently, he must add a lot of conversation to our meetings because we're so much quicker when he wasn't here, you think?
I have no opinion either way on that matter.
Okay.
I don't think it was him.
I know, and in wrestling terms, I'm stalling, right?
Something to that effect, sir.
Yeah, okay. Monday, August 25th and Tuesday show no activities. On Wednesday, Finksburg Bicycle Pedestrian Planning and Feasibility Study Virtual, and I will be on that virtual. On Thursday, Closed Admin, open session, Priority Carroll International Overdose Awareness Day, and Carroll County Disaster Preparedness Month Proclamation. I sound like your motions, don't I?
I know. We're all falling into the water valve thing.
It's a rough day.
Yeah. Rough as the cast iron bolts.
The next item, submit application, accept award, Child Support Enforcement Agreement for the Sheriff's Department, firearms for Carroll County Sheriff's Department, Net Cloud Mobile Performance Essentials Plan, approval to purchase project management software, contract renewal geographic GIS software, LED lighting upgrades to athletic fields of Freedom Park, Leister Park Pickleball Court Installation, independent financial auditing services, connect and explore path for economic development, approval to spend funds for Department of Public Works, approval to purchase shortcrete, shotcrete linings, operating budget transfer for Carroll County Public Schools, option to purchase the Barbara Hunter property through the Royal Legacy Program. Briefing on off-the-premises signs, proposed text amendment. Public comment, admin session open, agenda review. Friday and Saturday show no activities, and podcast is Commissioner Gordon.
So nice not to see my name under the podcast.
I know.
You want to go for a three, Pete, huh?
I think you did three or four weeks in a row. Yeah, you have to share.
One of these days, I'll let one of you guys do it.
Either that, or you can have us on as a special guest.
Are you being greedy? Were you being greedy again?
Just monopolizing the podcast.
Yeah, yeah. Monday, September 1st, county offices are closed. Tuesday shows no activity. Wednesday, overdose prevention policy group, Commissioner Guerin at 2:00 p.m., Planning and Zoning Commissioner, Commissioner Gordon at 6:00 p.m. On Thursday, 8:00 a.m., Closed Admin, 9:00 a.m. open, Annual Recovery Month Proclamation, National Suicide Awareness Month. Martin Covington is retiring.
Yep. End of an era.
Yes, yes, yes. Approval to submit grant and acceptance of award for violence against women, Employment Campus Zoning District, Renewable Energy Certainty Act, application for springboard community services, and approval to hold a public hearing, request acceptance of additional state homeland security grant program, public comment, admin open, agenda review, Friday Saturday show no activities, and Commissioner Guerin has the podcast. Sound good?
Yep.
Can we entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
And if there's any, it would take two minutes of discussion to have us be past one hour, but we're okay, right?